Next on the agenda would be Department of Director's report, Mr. Howard Nevers would be first.
Good morning Commissioners, how y'all doing?
I'm good.
You're good Howard.
Yeah, I also stayed through the storm like some of these people said they did and it got bad. But after the storm that Wednesday evening, we had two that worked with the road departments in Appalachia, that was me and Timmy Lee.
Yep.
But we jumped right on 98 and started clearing up to the biggest pines which is up by 24th Street. We've got another bigger pine that has a lot of power lines in them, so we kinda skipped over them and then we went west. Cleared out two county lines, went down C-30, opened all of it up to the county line. And we had, well, some damage, 98 and all was good just the debris in the road. But on C-30 is, which is Carribeau on C-30 right, also 257 foot of pavement which is washed out. Then on C-30 in Franklin and Appalachia right here, we've got 220 foot of pavement. And that's before you get to Nine Mile which is gone, broke out to the yellow line. And the crew that we had in Carribeau did an excellent job, I had a crew there, the crew in East Point also did an excellent job. And they also opened up 98 from that end to the county line and to Alligator Point, Alligator Drive to Ballpoint Road. And at this time, we've got all the side roads is open and clear, just the debris's still on the shoulder. We've got all the county roads in Appalachia that's clear and open. So, and Alligator Point up to the KOA which we got 1,197 foot of temporary road which is gone, just washed to the power line. It's flat and ain't any no pavement there no more, completely gone. Chet Morrison, we got 745 foot which is gone, Harris Morrison, 225 foot of pavement that's gone. So, from Chet Morrison to the Marina, all that road, you got debris and some sand and stuff in the road, but I think the pavement will be fine, it's washed up to the edge of the pavement.
Howard, when we get through, get Michael to, uh, red State.
Okay.
That he loaned us a tractor, our tractor went down and we called, I called the State and the State gave us a tractor to use and we lowboyed from the county line back to Carribeau, our tractor was down and so the tire blowed off from it, so we had the State of Florida loaned us, the Forestry loaned us a tractor until we got done with back up going.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Forestry.
Yeah, we thanking them for it too.
Yeah.
But between, uh, East Point and Carribeau, they working on that and they doing a good job. So, hopefully in a week or so, a few days maybe, maybe they have it open, you know, where traffic can pass.
They told me that they'd have it open today.
They working fast, I seen them this morning, but I know from Carribeau way coming back this way, they've got a bunch of it done, so. Uh, all the roadside roads, county roads in Land Art, Carribeau is open. Oh, you know, but the debris, which they supposed to start to think that they don't clean up on that. And when we got out Wednesday evening, like some of these people had chainsaw, there was people everywhere, every road looked down, you had, you had the people was cutting stuff and getting it out of the road where people, you know, could get in and out. And also, want to thank all the people that cooked and were serving food. We had people in Appalachia, we had Carribeau and Land Art. And if it wasn't for that, we would probably starve, pretty much, you know, the ones working 15 hours a day trying to get the roads and stuff open.
Y'all done an excellent job, in my opinion Howard, you done the best you could with the resources that you had.
Thank you.
Uh, and a lot of the stuff on state highway that you had to clean.
Yeah, well, we, we talked to clean 98 up first for people to get in, for emergency people to get in to help us.
And I mean, and that's the right thing to do, but I'm just saying, it wasn't done by the State of Florida and the state highway, it was done by the county.
Yes, sir.
So, we tried to do what we could do with the resources that we had to get these roads passable so that these people, Duke Energy and others could get in here to help us.
Yeah.
Uh, and we got a very small road crew, as everybody knows, we do the best we can with the resources we have and I think you done an excellent job. I've heard nothing but praise for yourself, especially, it was you and one man with a truck with flashes on and that was it.
Yeah.
But you done an excellent job with what you had, you know. You could've waited and called, tried to call somebody in it. People have to understand that when you issue a mandatory evacuation, your employees, as the Senator said earlier, you gotta look out for your employees too, so a lot of those people left.
Yeah.
Well, till they get back in and the roads are clear where they can come back to help. You're very limited as to the number of people that stay. And I think you done an excellent job with what you had to work with.
Yeah.
Not a doubt in my mind, I mean, I know you couldn't clean the causeways on the bridges, that's Highway 98. But somebody had to step up and clean this stuff and our county crews are the ones that done that.
Chairman, you right, because the State said it'd be at least two days or maybe three before they could get in here and push and Howard had it open in hours, maybe it gonna be two or three days.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
He done an excellent job of what he had to work with.
Wouldn't even have lights today if it hadn't been for Howard, 'cause they pushed it out.
And got the trucks in here to start moving forward. Uh, and there was a lot of emergency vehicles and all that came here. Uh, it was mentioned earlier that some of the emergency vehicles were turned away, they were not, they went on to Port St. Joe. They stopped here looking for fuel, looking for a place to get something to eat as they come up from Orlando, O'Koye, other places. But they stopped at the EOC, 'cause I was there. And we pointed them over there because we didn't have the medical needs that the people to the west of us had. They're still looking for 46 people as we talked here this morning, they don't know where they're at, they're gone. So, there's so much debris, they could be under the debris, they could, you know, I just don't know, you know. We're very thankful and we should say a prayer that we were as lucky as we were. I don't wish it on nobody, but those people to the west of us are really hurting. So, a lot of those emergency vehicles, as I've stated this morning, that they were turned away, they weren't turned away, they were passed to the next county that needed them a lot worse than we did. I know we got issues and we're gonna try to straighten that out, but I just want to put that out there that I was there when those amputations come through and different, uh, fire and rescue, they were sent to Port St. Joe 'cause they can't find these people. We were very fortunate as a community, as I'm aware, we haven't lost many, I did hear something about a lineman and I regret that, but other than that, the community come through pretty good, you know.
Well, Marion County, Marion County sent out some of their search team, that's what Pam was talking about. Marion County sent out some, Alottawa County sent out, Orange County, there's a lot of counties to the east and to the south that sent out, you know, and when I see them come through, I stopped them and thanked them, you know, because they were, they were on their way to Mexico Beach.
And some of these, uh, search and rescue teams that come through, come through right at dark, they were looking for gas, I said, and food. And they were looking for a place to set up 50 tents to house their people. Uh, we hosted that at the airport, give them a place to put their tents, they woke up next morning and started going west as we got the road cleared on 98 to get them people over to the west of us somewhere else. So, I don't think a lot of them was turned away, I think a lot of them was passed on to the west of us where they really needed it. Howard, you have anything else for us to say?
Yeah, and for, and St. George Island, all, everything's good over, our county roads is good, all but on the west end around, a few of the roads over there still got water in them, we could grade them as far as possible, you can go through them, so, good on that.
Any other comments from the Commissioners, Mr. Jones, you got anything for Mr. Howard?
No, I'm good.
I've just got one thing, Howard, get with Alan in case that Alan needs some of your equipment down there to help with that road. Uh, and get with Alan and, and get that taken care of so the Alligator Point people have a way. And emphasize it's only gonna be like the four wheel vehicle.
Howard, y'all done a good job and you still got, you know, you got a lot ahead to do, but y'all keep up the good work.
Commissioners, if you don't mind, while Howard, Fonda and Pam is here, I have one shot, administrative item I have to clear up. Get your board, get board action on. Item number one, after the county suffered the effects of Hurricane Michael, we all kicked into recovery mode. There were two requests that I approve that needs your action to ratify. The first was from Ms. Pam Brunel to allow members of the property appraisal's office to fill up their personal vehicles with gas at the county pumps as they were willing to use their personal vehicles to do storm assessments which would allow them to cover more property quicker. Again, as we refer to resources, currently, the property appraiser has one county vehicle. The second request I received was to allow county employees from the solid ways and road departments that evacuated to get gas to their vehicle once they return to the county. This would allow these employees to get to and from their assigned areas during cleanup and recovery efforts. These employees will refund the county for the cost of the gas. The road department has a daily log of everyone who got gas, the amount and the vehicles, that information since the storm that they used. As we all, as we all are aware, the first 48 hours after the hurricane, finding gas in this county was almost impossible. Board action to ratify the approval of these two requests.
So moved, the reason I'm making that motion, I come back in here, wasn't no gas station open till late on, they don't, and it wasn't no hot gas station, highly open to get back in.
Yeah.
So, they had to have gas to do their work.
On both the requests Commissioners, I needed, I needed the men working and I needed the property appraisal's employees out there assessing so we would have information to move forward with FEMA and other agencies.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey, any further discussion?
Yeah, you said they were gonna pay it back, I wish, they didn't have to pay it back, but we got to get it back, but.
Just, just for the issue of, from Fonda and Buster, as some of your county employees live in some matri and outlying areas, they had no gas up there, of course, most people didn't have any power as we all know. Uh, so I agree with the policy that Mike put in place to try to get them going. Now that, now that the gas stations are all open, it's not an issue, but during the time it was an issue. We do have a motion on the second on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor, all opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you Commissioner.
Anything else for Howard you need to report to the board?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Any other Commissioner comments from Mr. Howard other than he's done one world of a job for this county?
Bless your hand.
Thank you Howard.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda would be, Mr. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning Commissioner. Uh, Solid Waste Department, we, uh, have set out some containers for the businesses and also the public throughout the county to get rid of their spore of food. From Carribeau with the Appalachia, we have one at the recycling site, East Point at the old recycling site. Also at the St. George Island recycling site and Carribeau, IGA.
What about Appalachia?
Appalachia's the recycling site, the old, the one which closed down.
Okay.
The on Combe Street, yes sir. Um, the debris, as you know, we have debris contractors, so there's nothing we can do right now, our hands are tired. Just waiting on them, I talked with Don, the debris contractor, so they gonna get us moving today. Uh, we have the landfill ready to accept all this debris. We put in demands, put in a lot of hours to get that, that landfill ready. So, we're just on waiting right now, stand by, waiting for them to bring it in. Nut boom trucks is, uh, we're not allowed to tell them debris. If there's something y'all need us to do, just let us know, other than that, we gonna work all normal hours and go on.
Let me ask you a question real quick Fonda, is that landfill gonna hold all this debris? And, now, now, let me back up, we got staging sites for debris.
That's correct.
All right. Once the disaster is over, then this debris has to go somewhere else, correct?
Yes.
From the site to either our landfill or to some other place. Is our landfill gonna hold all this and is it gonna fill this landfill up where we have to turn around now and open up a new landfill which gonna cost a couple million dollars?
Right.
Let me sit there for a second, these are questions we can't answer because as you all seen in email, the debris issue is being taken out of our hands by DOT and so most of that debris, they're gonna be managing and they have not contacted us, sending them to use our staging area or our landfill.
Let me, if we're gonna get into that, let me read this letter, 'cause I'm reading it different than what you're reading it.
I did too.
I'm reading it, when it comes to this, this memorandum of understanding. FDOT will not seek a new debris management removal contract in any county unless that county does not have a pre-storm emergency debris removal contract already secured.
Right.
Which we do.
Right.
So, that's not saying DOT's coming here.
No.
They're saying it's coming to any county that does not have a free contract.
And we have one.
And we have one.
Right, so read the, go to the paragraph ahead, it says, the last sentence, the paragraph ahead. Uh, FDOT is offering, following the county's voluntary request, to take on the responsibility for each county's existing pre-storm emergency debris removal contract at the existing approved rate. The first paragraph, last sentence, first paragraph.
I see that, but then you go below that and it says if you already got a contract, then they're not coming.
No, 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 they're not gonna get a new contract, they're gonna use one we already have.
So, where are they gonna, where are they gonna stage this stuff Alan?
They might be using our staging sites as the contract says, but I, I'm not sure that, we haven't, we haven't heard, we haven't had contact with FDOT yet.
Okay, our staging sites, we've agreed to let the city of Appalachia co-locate in our staging sites.
Okay.
And we already got this county debris contract where they're gonna be staging in that site.
Right.
Now, you're gonna put the city's stuff in that site which has to be kept separated and documented separate.
Right.
Now, you're gonna add a third person into this same site, you, this, there's gonna be an issue there. Do you need DOT?
But they're, they're, they're taking over responsibility handling this debris, they, I don't know, and you might be, they may be slipping a fast one and they may be trying to dump all their debris on us too, I, we don't know that yet.
That's what I'm, I.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna agree to it until we do know it.
Well.
Because we don't know what they're gonna do with this debris when they pick it up.
Right.
And you can't co-mingle the city's stuff and the county's stuff and the DOT stuff, you can't co-mingle all that.
I know, but the cost, the savings they're offering this county are so overwhelming that we have to think about this very carefully because if we don't take their offer, then the county's responsible about 12 and a half percent match which could be hundreds of thousands of dollars of our share.
But if they co-mingle it, we get no reimbursement.
But they're, but they're responsible for that, if they're gonna do all, they're responsible for it. I think, I think, I don't think it's a trick, I mean, I think they are offering to do something because we're a physically constrained county.
It looks like maybe somebody's talked to somebody.
Oh, I have no doubt someone's talked to somebody.
But we gotta know more than signing this memorandum, Alan, they gonna have to answer some of these questions. Where are they gonna take their debris, who's gonna monitor that debris? Is it gonna be kept separate from the county's debris contractor and the city of Appalachia co-located? In the case of Carribeau, over in Carribeau, they gonna use our site too.
Yeah, 'cause we got a ton.
There's a lot of questions that ain't answered in here.
I'm not disagreeing, but.
I know there's money saving, I understand that, but there's, you gotta have this stuff wrote down, you can't go by what they tell you. You gotta have this stuff wrote down where we can understand what they're gonna do. Are they gonna pick this stuff up and take it back to Tallahassee, I don't know, and you don't either. I understand the money savings, but there's too many questions left in this contract as to what's gonna happen.
Mr. Chairman, because Carribeau's.
And if it's not wrote down, if it's not wrote down, then there's nothing that we can fall back on. Well, we don't know, that's my whole problem.
That's not, that's not, that's not a certified state, the very staging area, so we're not gonna do it, if your city does it, that's, that's something you fight with.
These, these staging areas have to have a DEP permit, which we have for the county's five staging areas. I don't know what the state's gonna do, where they're gonna put their debris, is it gonna be separate so that we get FEMA reimbursement for what the county does and the city can get FEMA reimbursement for what the city does? If all this stuff gets piled together, nobody gets nothing. The state don't need it, but the counties and the cities do. So, we gotta make sure what we're doing, that's all I'm saying, Alan, I'm not saying that we shouldn't take this 100% no cost, but we got to have more information.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not disagreeing, I'm speaking 'cause Pam's lost her voice, otherwise she'd be up here hopefully saying some of the same things. Then I think we ought to accept that on face value, it looks good, but we need the details, I agree completely because we don't want to be caught, and I understand that Monroe County did get caught in this trap after the last hurricane down there. So, I'm aware of the trap that could be being set, which is the state authority comes in and then they decide that they're not gonna pay all the costs. So, I'm aware of this, it's a mess down in the Keys, I was just down there. But, you know, we, this is, this ought to be a good deal, but maybe it's not.
I understand it and I understand we do have documentation.
We have, we have our, CDM contractor right here, his name is Jeannie, Jeannie Devlin, right here, and so she'll be assisting us. She's, she's under contract with us.
Correct.
To assist in getting these answers, these questions answered. And she doesn't know anything about it yet, she doesn't.
Jeannie Devlin, I'm with CDR McGuire, I'm the contractor for emergency management for the county. There's a lot of questions about your memorandum for sure, and I've talked to my company about them as well. We need to talk to a state person from emergency management to get all your questions addressed. Um, in general, the thing I can say, your, your concern about combining the piles, nobody gets reimbursed, that's the monitor's job and mine to make sure that that doesn't happen, so. And I've done this with other counties, the city and county have the same contractors, you keep the piles separate. Now, they can use the same staging areas, that's not a problem.
If there's room.
If there's room, yes, I mean, this is up to you guys for sure, you know. But piles would be kept separate, so that part right there is not necessarily a concern. Now, the other concerns, we can address with the state and get specific answers and Pam and I and whoever you need will sit together and make that list of questions for you, present that to the state and get you definitive answers if you need that before you sign anything, and I would recommend doing so.
That's what I'm saying.
Absolutely, always.
I mean, I, I don't know, is there another document besides this, or are we actually signing anything?
Nope.
Oh, we have to.
And it's not, it doesn't, all these questions that I'm asking, I'm asking on behalf of the citizens of this county. I gotta have answers before I can just sign all, I understand they're paying 100% and I'm glad they are. Where are they gonna take this debris, where are they gonna stage it? Uh, there's nothing in here that says anything about that.
Right, right.
And I'm worried about our staging sites are not big enough to have three different contract, three different levels in there.
Right.
Because there's a lot of stuff just on 98 and this contract doesn't say they're just doing 98. This contract says they can come in and go down any street, pick up debris, everything, and we need help, don't get me wrong, but how is it all gonna work, because they're not telling me nothing.
Absolutely.
And for me to sit here and vote and sign a contract with DOT and when I don't have the, the full understanding of what's going on, I can't do that.
Exactly.
I'm not against 100% them paying for it all, I'm not against that at all, saves this community a lot of money, but I also gotta know what I'm signing for signing.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I know we got no staging area in Carribeau out there, but along with Land Art Village and the city of Carribeau's gonna fill that pool because we're gonna have to separate Carribeau's from what's on.
That's correct.
As you said, because it's.
And the counties.
Right, and the counties.
And the counties.
Because Carribeau's got a ton like y'all do over here.
That's what I'm saying, I'm scared these sites are not big enough to handle DOT's stuff too.
They're not.
They're not.
They're not, just because.
And at some point, if all that stuff gets dumped together, nobody gets nothing.
The city of Carribeau alone is just about gonna fill that pit up itself.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I got to know where they're going with this debris before I can sign it.
Absolutely. Okay, Pam and I.
I mean, if the board tells me sign it, I'll sign it, don't get me wrong, but it just don't make no sense to me, you know? It don't make no sense to me, you gotta know what you're signing.
Exactly.
And what, what our obligation and what our liabilities are.
Absolutely. My recommendation is Pam and I will sit together and make a list of questions, any, any concerns y'all, you know, let her know, or me or whoever. And we'll meet with the state, we'll get definitive answers for you before you agree to anything, that's my recommendation.
Now, the board won't be meeting again before, if they get all these questions answered, what does the board wanna do? Hold a special meeting to address this issue again?
If, and I'll bring it up later in my report, I have a, originally we had a special meeting scheduled, I'm ready for the 29th, so that's.
We can't wait that long though Mike, we're picking up debris starting today, we gotta have some action now. We get answers to the question, as Alan said, they're paying 100%, I'm for all that.
Do you want, because this woman has experience, I, I hope she's had a lot of experience with debris management, Jeffy, do you want to, they understand this, we wanna make sure that we're not gonna get caught with state debris in our, in our staging areas also where we can't handle debris we generate much less than the state of Florida, so we wanna know where the debris is going and how it's being treated so we are not overwhelmed because we only have one landfill. I mean, I, I'll be glad to assist in this thing, but my, my suggestion to you all is that you defer to your EOC, that you delegate your EOC and your contractor, if the questions are answered satisfactorily, that they then issue the mission statement. I mean, that, that, so you all will have to come back in.
I don't have no problem with that.
Because that may be tomorrow, maybe, I don't know when it would be, hopefully in 36 hours, we'll have those answers.
And that shouldn't stop the cleanup, I mean, you got staging, you got places you can stage now, right?
For the county contractor, yes.
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 My question, the original question again with Fonda is, can we handle all this debris in that landfill? Is it gonna shut the landfill down once you fill it up with all this debris?
Well, first of all, I know the landfill is going to, it's going to the CND area, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so the landfill's not, we have a CND.
But that's right there as you go in on the right.
Correct.
Is that gonna handle all of this debris?
Yeah, the CND isn't a falling back when you first come in, that's the yard trash area. Yes, uh, it's gonna fill it, if it's right, but I'm understanding.
But, but they might be chipping it, we don't know, so you might be chipping it. And then we'd end up with mulch.
DOT may be chipping it.
Chipping it, chipping, yes.
Oh, chipping it. You ain't gonna be chipping all that, that's got all them nails.
Well, a lot of it is vegetative material, I mean, I'm not.
Jimmy Crowder's gotta chip or chip anything, steel, blocks, wood.
I ain't gonna go there.
We have, we have Crowder Golf, our contractor.
Oh, they, they may have some.
He's here, he making, tells us that he, he gonna be chipping it, is Mr. Don made it?
They're gonna be chipping, he just, Don just said it.
Good morning, Don Madio, Regional Manager for Crowder Golf. Uh, first, let me commend Franklin County on an incredibly well-done job, getting your roads cleared in that amount of time. This county was inaccessible, we couldn't get in for the first couple days and just congratulations to your department for a job well-done clearing the roads so we could get in here and assist you all. Um, it's a three, and your citizens, I beg your pardon, and your citizens, yes ma'am. Um, it's a three-part process of the contract, there's the pickup and haul portion to your debris management site which you referred to earlier as the staging area, it can be that too. Um, it's a permitted site, at this debris management site, we typically bring in grinders and that's what we would do for you all at each of the debris management sites. So, the vegetative material coming from the right-of-way will go to the debris management site offloaded, first of all, quantified by your monitor to track all of your costs for FEMA reimbursement and state reimbursement because of the DOT directive. It will then be ground up, you typically get a four to five to one breakdown when the vegetative material is ground up and then it will be stockpiled to later be hauled out to a facility, either your facility or a facility nearby that can accept this type of material. There are open markets for this type of material, land use, power generation, things of this nature, but there are also private facilities that accept this material at a cost that is fully reimbursable to you under the Public Assistance Program. Disposal costs are reimbursable under the Public Assistance Program. Your contractors will work with you to submit those costs and get you reimbursed for that. Uh, so we will eventually haul that material out of the debris management site after it's been reduced. For material that is not vegetative, for example, CND, metals, white goods, um, pressure-treated wood, things of this nature, that is typically picked up at the right-of-way and transported directly to the landfill. In this case, if you can accept it, we could use your landfill for the CND portion so it would never go to a debris management site. And so, the reason we wanna do that is, you all didn't suffer a catastrophic event, well, you did, but I, I don't mean to minimalize it as opposed to some of your neighbors in the west that just has co-mingled debris. Um, in this case, I think we're gonna be able to get away with hauling the CND separately from the right-of-way directly to the landfill. So, it'll never go to the debris management site where there could be contamination issues. Uh, we wanna keep, try and keep all of that separate if we can.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna proceed as.
So, obviously, I guess you can motion if you wanna defer to just these additional questions, I mean, Mr. Chairman, you could certainly be there and have the board, but not have a special meeting if in fact the questions are answered satisfactorily then we enter into this agreement with the state.
Pleasure to board.
How are we gonna know if they're answering satisfactorily if we don't meet or talk about it?
You're gonna talk, no, you're gonna talk to them, well, I mean, I'm presuming the chairman will act on your.
Yeah, I'm not trying to bypass anybody, I'm just, it's just a question.
Well, the chairman's acting on your behalf.
Okay.
If the questions aren't answered, then I don't think we already entered into it.
Okay.
If, if we can't get satisfactory answers besides, we're gonna pick it up, it costs you nothing, where are you going with it, what, how you gonna dispose of it and what's going on, I mean, you, you, I just, in, in a private business, I don't do things without knowing what's going on.
I agree.
And if it ain't wrote down, then you don't know what's going on. Uh, people tell you things all the time, but you gotta have documentation, I mean, that's just the only way to proceed.
I agree with you.
I wanna know what I'm, what I'm voting on and I wanna know what I'm signing and that's for government or for private enterprise. I mean, you just don't make decisions based on what somebody tells you. So, so we need to deal with this issue, how do y'all wanna, anyway, I need a motion on the second to allow.
Mr. Chairman, the point of procedure, if I may say, I'm, I'm not sure what you're being asked to authorize. Uh, are they wanting you to have CDR McGuire and your EOC director answer questions and the board authorize the chairman to sign the contract, or are they wanting somebody else to sign the contract?
Well, it sounded like EOC was gonna handle it all.
I'm gonna recommend that.
I mean, what, what has to happen is, and I'm reading directly a quote here. Counties who wish to request this assist, counties who wish to request this assistance should submit a mission request to the state ERC via the web EOC platform, and this is specifically what it's gonna say. Pursuant to section 252 through 36 Florida statute and in accordance with executive order 18276, X county, it will be Franklin County, requests that the state of Florida conduct all remaining debris removal. requests that the state of Florida conduct all remaining debris removal, public assistance category A and emergency road clearance category B. That is the legal responsibility of Franklin County. This is not a request for mutual aid, this is a request for the state to assume legal responsibility for all debris removal and all remaining emergency road re-clearance in X county being Franklin County. So that's what we would type in, that's, that's what the chairman would be authorized on.
So.
But I haven't, that's the first I've seen that, I haven't. My recommendation, it, it, I know the board feels like it needs to take action today, right now, as opposed to setting a new meeting. But getting additional information is great, uh, uh, I don't think that anyone other than the chairman should be signing a contract on behalf of Franklin County. He would certainly act, uh, at the wishes of, of the, the full board as far as what you're wanting to accomplish. But we do need to look, give me a chance to read that language and, and see where it's going, I can give advice to the chairman. Either that, or let's get information, reconvene in a special meeting, one, one or the other. But, but delegating to someone other than the chairman to execute is something I would not recommend.
In reading, let me read a, what Alan just read, this is a request for the state to assume legal responsibility for all, all debris removal.
That's what I heard too.
Does that mean the contractor go back home and the state's gonna remove all this debris? It's what it says. What it says.
I, I, but in context, I'm, I'm assuming in context, they're gonna haul the county's voluntary request to take on responsibility of each county's pre-existing store emergency debris contracts. I think they're gonna demand it for us or not.
I don't know, it's, it just says all debris removal. So if you give them this memorandum, then they have responsibility to not only pay for it, but to handle all debris removal, what it says.
If you have your own debris removal contractor, in the middle part, there, it's underlined.
I know.
Then you're not under, they're, they are only a funding source, is my understanding of this. At a hundred percent, they're supposed to, uh, except they're going to absorb your cost share. You have already entered into a debris removal contract with Crowder Gulf, we're getting started today. So all that in front of you is, at this time, they are letting you know they are going to be the funding source going forward. And my understanding is that you're going to be able to make those requests to the state for reimbursement for your expenditures.
I'm not an attorney, so.
As far as your DOT roads, now, you do have a significant amount of DOT roads here. So DOT crews are eventually going to come in here and remove that debris. Where they take it, that, that's up to them to negotiate either with Franklin County or its municipalities. But they can't do anything without your authorization, sir. So if you don't want them to pick up your debris, you can always sign an MOU release that releases the DOT from having to come in here and potentially co-mingle the debris. What you could do instead is just have your contractor take care of it all, since DOT is absorbing that cost. Either way, it's entirely up to y'all.
I might, y'all going way above my head, I just know what I'm reading, maybe I'm taking things out of context.
Mr. Chairman.
Again, if you could look at that middle part, sir.
I need this man to read Ty over here, he needs to be looking at it, sir.
I'll be more than happy to look at it, but I have it, I mean, it was sitting on my desk when I walked into the meeting and I, I don't know that I wouldn't be ma- making that recommendation to the board without having a chance to read it, give us some thoughtful consideration, receive additional information based on the, uh, directions from the board this morning that you, you have questions that you won't answer. So I don't, I don't think you're in a position right now, uh, with information to make a final decision. So I think your options are either let's re, get the information, reconvene, or get the information and y'all, y'all delegate to the chairman, uh, if, if he's satisfied, uh, with, with the advice that he gets from council and the, the additional information, that he can sign on behalf of the board without an additional meeting, but I, I think it has to be one or the other, I, I would not recommend, let's make that decision on the fly. Let's don't, you know, let's don't build this airplane while we're flying it in the middle of this meeting. We need more time, more consideration, more information.
Mr. Jones, you had comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, sir, the reason we're asking questions, we're trying to protect the contract we do have with you guys.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
It's, it's not a, a stall tactic, it's not anything else.
No, sir, no, I'm not taking it as that is all.
No, y'all gonna only go to work.
Yeah.
Well, that, that was gonna be my next question, so I have eighteen units.
Go to work.
Yes, sir.
Go to work. That's what I want you to do, go to work.
Shall I start now or do you need any more questions?
Go to work.
Thank you.
You know, we. As far, far as this DOT memorandum, how would the board like to handle this?
I wanna handle it like this, I wanna know everything going on during this storm, the bits and pieces. I ain't getting enough information during this storm, I'm a commissioner too. I wanna get, and I ain't voting on nothing else until I get all the information.
I have a question too.
Yes.
Pam.
She's lost her voice, so let's.
It don't matter, she can still hear.
He's gonna start cleaning up, he gonna start in Carabelle cleaning in the city of Carabelle as well?
No, that, those cannot be co-mingled.
Okay.
They're, they're still working on piggybacking on our contract.
Okay.
Right, the, the, Commissioner Massey, your current contract, uh, excludes the two municipalities. It's up to the municipalities, there, there, there were some county attorney emails that I was, uh, reading yesterday. Uh, some of your, uh, communities north of us, Marianna, some other cities are piggybacking on to, um, county debris removal contracts that have been properly bid and let out, as Franklin County has done. Now, whether or not Pam's received those requests for piggybacking yet from the city of Carabelle or city of Appalachia, I do not.
The mayor just told me she got it.
That, well, they are working on that, uh, we, even to address that issue. You cannot, they cannot work in the city of Appalachia and Carabelle and work for the county too, cause all that stuff's gonna get co-mingled. When it's, he gets one area cleaned up, then he'll immediately proceed to try to help the cities.
Okay.
And we as a board have allowed them to use the same staging sites, but it has to be done separately.
Yeah, I can understand that.
So, so we, we got a pattern and a, and a protocol and procedure that we have to follow to make sure everybody gets the proper reimbursement from the federal government, so you gotta do these things in the right way. So we're working with the cities, and we're gonna work with the cities, we're gonna help them what we can. Uh, I really wish that they had have done a pre-disaster, uh, debris management contract like we did. Long, you know, hoping we never, and it costs you nothing to do these management contracts until you actually say, tell them, just like I did this young fellow a while ago, go to work, then that contract is in force and they're moving forward. Come forward, please, put your name for the record.
Brenda La Paz, Mayor, Carabelle, we have signed the contract with Crowder, Gulf Crowder. We are applying for our DEP permitting today. We have negotiated with the school board previously last year, the softball field, the baseball field at the old Carabelle High School for our staging site. And if we, I'll have to speak with, uh, Commissioner Massey, if you think we have extra room there. Uh, I would like to offer to co, co-share that site with the county, I tried to speak with Mr. Marone earlier this week on that. Um, I think, I feel like we'll have room to, to allow the county to put some staged, some debris there at those two locations.
Yeah, cause you don't chip it, so it will be.
Yes, so that's the baseball field and the softball field at the old Carabelle, the high school side.
Thanks for that information. Where are we at? So where are we at now?
Do we need a motion?
We do need a motion to allow attorney to look at this memorandum and see where we can move forward on that.
Well, I don't think the, the board has had action taken, there's been a lot of discussion. Uh, the discussion was either vote to move forward to authorize the chairman to sign this DOT memorandum of understanding if, if the information is satisfactory from staff and the attorney, or to just.
It's not to be signed, all that has to happen is, and I'm not saying that, I, I, it, it needs to be reviewed.
Well, let's don't quibble about the details, just signing it or agreeing to it, but we still, the board has not made the decision whether to authorize the chairman to move forward with the additional information, or to convene an additional special meeting of the, of the, the full board to make that decision, once the information is obtained, but I think it's clear the board wants new inform, additional information.
What's the statement, Alan?
He's already read it.
It's, it's, I hope y'all have a piece of paper.
Yeah, I got it, we got it.
So, so what would happen is Pam or someone in the office would submit this statement to the EOC, and that would, that, that's all that, that we have right now is the statement. I mean, I guess, no, that's all we have, and that would then start the project, the EOC, do whatever we're gonna do. And I, I, I assume we have a window to do this, but, but there's not gonna be a contract, mine I'll sign, it's just we make this request.
Go on, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, when this came out to me in the middle of the night, uh, I got very upset, and a few of you commissioners know why.
Oh, yeah.
And I had a long, uh, they then proceeded to have Linda McWhorter call me, and me and her got in a very heated discussion. And, uh, I told her point-blank that, uh, I would not put in a mission. It's had to come in front of my board, and it also had to come, I had to send this to these contractors, cause this affects them.
It does.
So I sent it to the contractors, I sent it to the debris monitors, I sent it to CDR McGuire. So they know that until, uh, y'all look at it and y'all decide that I'm not going forward. Now, since then, I've had Wes Mall call me, I have Michael Cannon call me, I've had him emailing me, I even had the governor tell me this was a great deal. And he talked to me on the phone. I, I don't do anything without y'all's approval.
You had the governor call you?
Yes, he, he was talking to me about this debris deal, yes, ma'am. And again, y'all know how I feel about that, and y'all know why I feel about that. So, uh, again, we have to do what's in the best interest of this county and, and these citizens are getting it cleaned up. But also, we can't afford to lose money by doing, going backdoor deals and doing things that we shouldn't do. So I don't, I don't know about this, my gut tells me that it's, it's like fish, it stings. I've nev, and I said, Linda, when is, when is the state ever been in the debris removal department?
They haven't.
So, that's my question. As my mom said, if something looks too good to be true, most of the time, it isn't.
It's just a statement, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, it, it's a statement that was made just a while ago by one of our constituents that is sitting here about, don't do anything through the back door.
Exactly.
And that's why I have con, serious concerns about this, because we did everything that we are supposed to do as a county in pre-storm event, during the storm event, and now post-storm event. We've got the contractors that we're supposed to be having, we have been prioritized, I mean, we have been privatized with Florida Department of Transportation, since before we moved in this building in two thousand and two, we've been privatized with Florida Department of Transportation. That means they don't come into this county, because we had, they, they hired contractors for. Now, all of a sudden, we've got DOT gonna come in here and do debris, it just, unlike you Pam, it just don't smell right.
That's my personal opinion.
It just don't smell right.
So will we, uh, don't accept anything from DOT, they come with it?
I don't know what they, what they doing, I mean, that, that's the whole problem with, with this piece of paper, we don't know what they're doing. If they say they're coming to the landfill with, and this board agrees to let them come, then they can come. I can't make that determination.
Well, and my thing is, we've already did what we were supposed to do about getting pre-storm contracts. We've already got Gulf Crowder in here, we've already got the debris monitors in here, we've got everything we need to do, you know. I mean, I'm, I'm going that way. Uh, so, but, but it, the pleasure, my, the way I think, is it the pleasure of the board, what y'all direct the, the chairman to do, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm real leery of this, I'm telling you.
Don't they have to have a staging site too, to stay?
They've never, they've never done this, so I don't know what they got.
But see, what I'm saying is, how long is it gonna be before they, this stuff hit the landfill? It ain't like it gonna be today, is it?
Oh, yeah, uh, the contractor say, he may be, I may see him today.
Might see him today?
With the C and D stuff.
Right.
Yeah, but the other stuff.
Gonna be at staging.
It gonna be staging.
At DOT decide they wanna just bring everything to the landfill, that's, we gonna take it, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I, I think it would be better for us, I would feel more comfortable. And it's not about, uh, trying to make it be the way I personally want it to be. I, I don't think as a board, we need to put all the pressure on you to decide it by yourself. You know what I mean? I, I just think it's unfair for us to put it all on you, that way if people like it or don't like it, they're gonna be looking at you and not at us, and I, I think that's unfair to do.
It is.
So I, I think we need to direct the attorney, Ms. Pam, staff, whatever, to get our questions answered. And if we have to come back and meet for thirty minutes to decide it all, I'm good with that. I, I think that's the best thing for us to do.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, it's my motion, because I, I just don't think it's fair to put it all on you, sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Sanders, to get all the questions answered, dealing with our attorney and Ms. Pam Brunel and the consultants as well, get that, questions answered, then I will call for a special meeting to address this issue. All those in favor? All opposed? The motion carries.
And discussion on this, I think all, everything from now on in this, this term related should go that way. So I'd be wanna know what's going on. I mean, I'm a commissioner, people be asking me questions in my district and out of district. And I need some answers, I, they, it's not a one-man show.
Finally, when we call this special meeting, I'd like for you to attend, cause we'll have answers as to what DOT is gonna do with our debris, whether it's gonna be at our staging sites or come directly to the landfill, so I'd like for you to attend, like, you would notify at the next special meeting. And I would like for you to attend, so you know what's going on, what the board has decided.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else from Mr. Davis here this morning?
I have one more thing, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I would like to see Fonda, I know we're just starting to clean up, I know there's a lot going on. Uh, there's been a lot mentioned about cities, I'm probably feeling to be really unpopular, but I'm not meaning to be. This board of county commissioners is for unincorporated Franklin County. I do not wanna see both cities clean, and I still work on an unincorporated Franklin County, I'm sorry, that will not work for me. I have half of unincorporated Franklin County is my district, not land-wise, but people-wise. So we need to make sure, and I would also like to see, since we're asking questions, even with our current contractors, I wanna know if they're estimating it's gonna take a month, month and a half, two months. If it's gonna take a super long period of time, we as a board might need to take some other emergency actions. I'm not for taking two or three months to clean the county up, so I'm just wanna throw that out there while you're here, and we're all here to talk about it.
Whatever cost it to get it cleaned up.
I'm not trying to make it worse than what it is, I just feel like now's the time to say it, so.
So you don't want our trucks in?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm saying, we don't need to have one truck in unincorporated Franklin County and two or three other trucks in the cities, is what I'm saying. We, our, our mission, as I understand it, is to provide assistance where we can.
Okay.
But we, the whole county has it, and unincorporated Franklin County only has us, they don't have anybody.
He said he had eighteen trucks, eighteen units to start, so, I mean, split them up all over.
Well, anyway, let me not say anything else.
Uh, that message has been given to the contractor.
That's okay. I'm just raising the concern while we're here, sir, I mean, everything we speak needs to be public, so that's what I'm doing.
So do you want any of our county trucks to be out?
No, I'm good with that, I'm just saying, I, I want, these questions have to be answered. I'm not trying to redirect you at all, I, I don't have the authority to do that.
Yes, sir.
But I'm with you on it, Greg, cause part of it's my district, Cheryl's got some Lenart.
I got a lot, I got a lot.
What, what are you, what are you asking for? My question is, do you want your four-knuckle boom to help him any?
I remember, we have a contractor who's doing all that.
I understand.
So we gotta make sure that he's happy, you know, he's being paid to pick this up.
Yeah.
Well, I absolutely want some of me in my district.
Absolutely. Well, the city got my school, he's all that.
Well, whether the city do it or not, I want my district cleaned up.
So I'd say.
Yeah, my district too.
No recycling at the time, we, we're using the cardboard containers to help out wherever we can, so we don't have any recycling site right now.
I got a couple of questions for Fonda, if you don't mind. Fonda, I know you, you're not gonna be picking up the debris, but I understand that this is the way it needs to be, that your yard and debris stuff is here, put it in separate piles like your white goods, if anybody's got white goods, put it in a separate pile, and put it in front of your property to where you, they can pick it up, right?
That's correct.
Okay, the other question is garbage service. Are we on a pretty good timeline on garbage service, or are they having problems getting to parts of the county? Or have you heard anything from the garbage service?
Well, I spoke with Greg James, the area supervisor, the way he talk like they don't. Well, I spoke with Greg James, area supervisor, he, the way he talk like they on, they on schedule.
Okay, so nobody, just go ahead and set your garbage out there to be, for normal pickup, right?
They picked up yesterday.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because some areas are not gonna be picked up like it usually gets, like Alligator Point now. So, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let me ask you a question, let me ask you a question. If the city to get the same contract, that don't make them cities be less. I mean, they good, they brewing effort.
You, you saying they can pick it back and get Crowder Gulf, which is, is our county debris contract?
Then the county gonna tell them, say, I want this, I, you can't do that.
The mayor signed one care bell and they gonna work under our mayor. And they gonna pick up what the mayor's got, they not gonna be working for the county, they gonna be working for the mayor of the city of care bell. And they gonna pick up the counties because we got our contractors, they gonna do our, your city's gonna be picking up as well. Like East Point, Larnark Village, the county be handling that, the mayor care bell be handling care bells. So they get picked up as well, all of it.
No, I ain't, I know that all that, we, what I'm saying is.
He's saying eighteen trucks that Crowder Gulf just told us that he had here. If the city of care, the city of Apple, you Crowder Gulf, they gonna take away from the eighteen, from the county? They'll bring more, is that your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, I wanna know they coming in here. When they coming here and they, well, I'm gonna send some in the Apple, we can't stop them from sending them. I want them in there.
Now, now, this is certainly Crowder Gulf's question to answer, not mine. But in my best opinion, they can bring additional trucks in where that's a separate operation. They don't need to take away from the county's trucks.
Right.
And they don't need to wait and use those trucks after the fact, they can bring in separate trucks.
That, that was, that's what I'm talking.
That's what the guy just said, he said, I have more trucks, I can bring them in.
Yes, so I don't think it's a matter of someone having to wait or anything or, or take it away from or anything like that. And that's something we can certainly clarify with Crowder Gulf if you'd like for us to, when we're talking to him about these questions.
I just wanna know that, because I'm a county commissioner. But I'm in Apple, that's cool, that's most of my district. I want it cleaned up and not wait till late.
I understand.
We gotta, we gotta, if, two weeks from now. If they had a seafood festival. Uh my district looking like no, I want it cleaned up, we look like the bomb done exploded now, you know, we gotta get it out of there.
I understand.
I don't know whether they gonna have it or not.
I'm gonna further attorney this, but I mean, right now, the city of Apple has not signed a contract. And city of Apple has jurisdiction over their debris.
Right.
That's the problem, the city didn't sign that contract and piggyback on and then they're all, then everybody's okay.
Yeah, my, my mayor done signed one, so she got it set up to go, okay.
Your mayor got sent, my mayor ain't got no damn shit.
What, what else you got, Fonda?
The mayor asked me to let you know that they've not signed a monitoring contract yet.
But you, you have with Crowder Gulf, correct?
They have for the debris removal, but not for the monitoring yet. And you, you need both parts to effectively complete the operation.
Okay, uh we have amnesty day Saturday, I just wanna let everybody know, so.
Just come and say?
Just come and say, we open all day for amnesty.
Now, let me back, it, it's Apple, it'll be in ticket, it happens to me.
And the, the question is, the, the contracts, we have contracts that is helping uh the citizens. When they come across, do we amnesty the trash? If they against, if they're getting paid or if they just volunteer? I mean, we don't know, they can, only when they come across scale, we just have to go by what they tell us.
That's all you can. Well, if they getting paid, they'll be coming more than once, it's down so many.
Do you think that's an abuse? Amnesty thing being abused by contractors?
That's been years, oh, half of years.
What's that?
I mean, it's been abused since we started doing roadside debris. Just answer your question.
Yeah. Harvey, that's not the answer I was looking for, yeah.
It's true.
Commissioners are the truth, okay. So, you're gonna ask me a question, or you're just gonna move on? Let's, let's move on, okay.
Okay, all right, uh parts are rep, every part has uh had tremendous damage, so. Just wanna let you know about that, and that's it.
Well, finally, at D W, I've noticed there's some power poles leaning, which is.
And down.
And down.
We have one down, yes.
So that, that's, that's a liability there with kids out there playing soccer because they use those ball fields to play soccer and baseball. Power poles leaning over like that, so we need to look at that, we can't allow them kids to go out there uh and create one world liability for this county. We either got to get the poles fixed or something. Of course, that's your department, so I'm gonna leave that up to you, but I wanna make you aware of that.
Okay.
And like you said, every part's got damaged, so you, you're already aware of.
Yes.
Anything else from the board from Mr. Davidson?
Thank you, Fonda, for the good job y'all been doing.
Okay, you welcome, thank y'all.
Look like you aged ten years.
Last five minutes he did.
Yeah, stress is, stress is hard on everybody.
Doing a good job.
Before Pam, Pam gets up, I'm, uh, what, because of her voice, I'm gonna step in here for her. I need, uh, and it's not on my report, it's, it's not commissioned. I need the board to ratify the first state of emergency proclamation we did back on the eighth of October, which was Monday before the storm, at eleven AM, for uh, which at that time, they called it Tropical Storm Michael, who seemed like years ago. But I need a board action on that.
Send me.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion.
And along those lines, I'd like to, I'd like to extend the state of emergency for, uh, I guess we do it as a week, a week at a time?
Seven days.
Seven days. So I need a motion, a separate motion on that.
Uh, uh, let me ask you this, Mike, do we want to authorize the chairman to sign the state of emergency as requested by E O C? Because we won't be meeting again before the next seven days.
True, so the board would authorize it.
If necessary and if requested by the E O C to extend that past this seven days here.
Would be a better motion.
We wanna keep this going until we, we're out of danger and.
Thank you, sir, I agree with that.
So the, the motion would need to be made like that.
That the board authorize the chairman to continue the state of emergency as necessary every seven days.
Sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
All right, okay. So Pam, lose your voice, she's asking me to, I can yell louder than anybody else. All right, so these are the, these are the additional items that we need to cover here. Uh, there are four distribution sites set up in Franklin County, Larnark Village, Chilis Hall, Carabelle Firehouse, East Point Church of God, and Apple, the old city complex, the Van Johnson complex. Those are, those are our distribution site setup. There'll be water and MRIs and I guess ice, all the people now getting power back on, so some of those may not be as critical. Uh showers and portable toilets that were staged throughout the county as needed. The theme of disaster survivor assistance team, which is a D A T, is at each of those four sites I mentioned. So anybody needing assistance can go to those four sites and register directly for individual assistance. Again, Larnark Village, Chilis Hall, Carabelle Firehouse, East Point Church of God, Apple, the old city complex, which I think is the Van Johnson complex, I think. Um, okay, and then Franklin County, we're doing the property, we are, Franklin County property raisers in the process of doing damage assessments in the entire county. Hopefully be done by this week and we'll get the information out there to everybody. Uh, we are, and uh, E O C is checking in on the emergency food stamp program, that's a federal program, so we need to get guidance from the feds on how that's gonna work. Uh, temporary communication established with E O C to respond to Hurricane Michael, and it's still ongoing. Salvation Army is cooking hot meals out of the Van Johnson complex, uh, so that's going on now. The health department's working with anyone with special, needing meds, contact the health department. Uh, the evacuated special needs clients, uh, were sha- uh sheltered out of the county, I presume they're coming back in now? They're already back in. Um, search and rescue has been completed for Franklin County. Had EMS strike teams from eleven different sheriff's offices around the county were here shortly after the disaster and assisting. Uh, had the medical uh team, as a medical team, at the health department in Carabelle. Uh, we understand the CVS Pharmacy will now be open from ten AM to six PM. Bioreq drugs in Apple is nine AM to one PM, so those is in Apple. Pharmacies, health and medical access, we understand the health department is open from eight AM to five PM. Sacred Heart Clinic in Apple, nine AM, twelve. Williams Medical Clinic East, twelve to four. Williams Medical Clinic West in Apple, twelve to four. Cert volunteers, I fed approximately fifty responders until the food ran out. They've assisted a lot of other people, I won't go into all the details on that because it's, uh, we're, we're past the cert right now. Uh, Franklin County's gotten a lot of responses from other counties. So as the other counties get access from west of us, some of the, some of the material you see here is gonna be shifted west because they're, it's an active deal. You know, we've got us stabilized and now some of that activity goes west. So that's just to be expected, that, you know, we need to go help the people who are still in great danger. Uh, and that is Pam's report unless there is something I skipped over.
I need a question. Question?
Hmm?
On this special needs. Um, do y'all call them people?
Yes, sir, repeatedly, and we moved them. And we moved St. James's patients.
But some of them, I got complained about, some of them didn't get no call.
Well, they have to be registered.
They have to be registered, yes, sir, they have to be registered.
I know all of them don't have no email, the more folk ain't got no email.
They gotta have phone calls, they gotta call us and say, I'm at the so, so location, be registered before the storm. But if they wait to the storm, you know, things get chaotic.
Commissioner, we had a bunch of them refuse to go.
Yeah.
A bunch of them refused to go. But as we've gotten calls in after this storm, telling us of their needs, I've made sure that Jeanne added them to our list. Now, special needs patients, and when I say special needs, I meant medically dependent patients, okay? Those are responsibility of their providers to let us know. As we hear about it, and we pushed out stuff about for, well, I started in two, uh, two thousand and five, and that was my first baby, that's what Butch Baker gave me, this is yours. I didn't know a thing about it, but I learned everything I could. I set up these programs. We've pushed it out since then, the state is, once again, since took this over out of our hands. But we still keep our own tracking database for us, so we do know.
Okay, one more question.
Hmm?
Generators, the people said they, it was a hundred generators.
Okay, yes, sir, those were, this is how crazy the state is. They were generator shipped, we did not ask for them. They were for our traffic lights, we have two. These are state assets, I cannot give them out to the general public. That is an ethics violation.
Was it a hundred?
It was a hundred and twenty, that's what I understand. I didn't see them, they just drove them in here, dropped them, and we found out later because we're going, what are these for? What are these for? Traffic lights, two, we got two traffic lights. That's how disconnected the state is from Franklin County. They shove drop shipments, shipments, drop ship, air drop was being dropped all over this county. We were finding out, uh, about it after the fact, when we got there with the national bar people, it was gone. It was gone, but no, sir, that is, I mean, that's just like anything else that has been bought with state funds in this county. I cannot loan it out unless it's a government entity. But those were for traffic lights only, and they are going back. Because every day they sit here, this county picks up that tab on them. Cha-ching, cha-ching, we didn't ask for them, they gotta go back.
We gotta pay for it, is that what you think?
When you ask for a state asset, if you use it, because they say, break that seal, then at the end of it, you're charged for what you don't, what you've used of it. Now, the federal government will pay part of that, but there's still a cost share on this county. It al- has always been that way, that's why I have, as commissioners know, I've always been very cautious about ordering stuff because eventually, if we don't get declared, it comes on us. And we still, even declared, this county's still responsible for twelve and a half percent. Now, if I loan them generators out, they don't come back, you've just bought those generators. The county's responsible for it.
I believe you because you told me the other day, I asked.
You asked me and I told you, did I not?
Well, this, this lady had oxygen, that's what I was asking.
And we had lots of people come in, Commissioner, if they'd come in and said, and we were, we were getting oxygen from everywhere. We had to uh make few threats, you don't get this oxygen in here, by two fifty-two, you are obligated, that's your client. You don't get this oxygen in here, guess what? You won't have a license because I will pull it down. Oxygen came, but the thing is, you gotta let us know, don't stay here. Go with the shelter people where you got electricity and you got oxygen. But when they came back, those that we found out, they're coming in saying that we couldn't get them oxygen, we shipped them to St. James. They give them, they give them a space, so they had electricity because St. James does have a generator.
Well, they, they didn't have, they didn't go and they feed and.
Yes, sir, I, I hate to say this, but it's called personal, it's personal responsibility. County cannot be responsible for everybody.
We have a, uh, Mr. Noah, we have an oxygen, my sister's oxygen dependent. She left out Tuesday morning, we knew, we knew what to do. And you just don't take chances when you've got somebody oxygen dependent.
We tried to tell them, we tried to tell them.
I'm telling you, and she, and I'll just tell you like this, she didn't come home until yesterday evening.
Smart woman.
Yeah, she is, and she's still living.
And we put that out, people calling us wanting to come home. Well, you need to understand, when you come home, you have no electricity, you, most of the time, at that time, I mean, right after the storm, I wanna come home, well, you have no electricity, you have no water and sewer. There's no fuel here.
I asked somebody, they didn't go, they told me they didn't get, didn't get no call or nothing.
If they were on our list, I promise you, they were called repeatedly by the health department.
I believe you.
I'm registered and we did not get anything.
Well, ma'am, if you'll give me your name, I'll check with the health department now. Some people, they called and didn't get an answer.
I'm Marissa Gander and Danny is giving, tomorrow's cafe, we did not get any calls.
You wrote that down on the outline?
Yeah, everybody knows who we are.
All I can do is check into it.
Uh, you, you got anything else for the board, Pam?
That's it.
Any commissioners have anything for Pam this morning? We even got anything for Pam? Thank you, Pam.
Thank you for your job, good job, Pam.
Mr. Eric Lovestrand, extension office director.
Morning commissioners, just give you a brief report about county extension office activities. Our county extension staff were all very fortunate, um, minimal damage to homes and properties, personal things, so everybody came through that very well. Regarding our facilities, you probably know that they did have some water in the courthouse and it came down from the third floor all the way down, but did not get into any of the extension office materials that we have there and stuff we have stored up there. Went down and checked on the facility that we're planning to move to at the mill pond there, the D E P building, and they fortunately did not have water come up high enough to get into that building either, right there on the mill pond. Did have a big tree down on the back wall and I cut that off yesterday off the building and didn't have any piercing of the structure, so that facility was sound as well. It did have damage to the greenhouse structure there with some big limbs, but minimal even on that. So facilities wise, everything that we're involved with came through in really good shape. The extension service has been working all across the district. We've got a lot of counties that are in our district that were impacted, just like Franklin County and worse as they go west and go north. So our folks have been working with faculty and staff in those offices to kind of make them whole and make sure they're taken care of with their basic needs. Got a lot of communication going on back and forth about that and getting resources to folks that actually work for the extension service so they can then be helping in their communities. And um, I've also, um, the group's been working to try to assist various industry groups that could use some help. I've been tasked to try to work in a communication group regarding beekeepers in the district that's been impacted. A lot of those folks have had issues, so we're communicating about resources that they need. Right now, their main issue is getting to their B yards to check on things, so they're cutting their way in and assessing damage at those sites. And then we've been communicating through the university with the State Beekeepers Association, with private individuals that have facilities that can stockpile resources that they can get to beekeepers in the area and um provide supplies that they need, so that's one group I've been working with a little bit. Also, been working to try to get some assessment, particularly with the shellfish leases over in Alligator Harbor. I've been out there along ninety-eight on the shoreline to see what got torn up and washed in there on the shore. They did get some significant damage there with floating cages that were in the bay, but primarily because of the big debris field that floated across from Alligator Point. And just boats and refrigerators and decks and stairs all came like through that. And just boats and refrigerators and decks and stairs all came like through that lease area and tore lines loose and pulled up poles. But those guys are just like other folks that work in industries like that. They've been out there picking up their gear and retying, putting up temporary poles. I mean, they were out there right after this event, assessing and trying to get things back in order. So, there have been some losses there, and I also went to leases over in Wakulla County, um, right after the event, and talked with folks that work those leases. We have some folks from Franklin County even that have leases over there, and looked at what's going on there. They fared pretty well. Storm surge kind of got up high enough that it went over most of the gear out there, and a lot of people have these floating cages that they could actually sink. And they went out there ahead of this event on really short notice and sunk cages to the bottom and let them sit on the bottom while the storm happened. And now they're out there just pulling those up and capping those floats and refloating everything. So, that industry didn't have near the damage that we might have suspected that they would have overall. I'll be working, trying to do some other damage assessment things too, maybe with the seafood industry. I want to talk with the property appraisers office, and I don't know if they, they're working specifically with those businesses here in our county to assess that damage, or they're more specifically looking at, you know, individual private homes. But I'll try to work to gather some information that can go up the chain too, just for trying to calculate some of the losses and estimates that get used in some of the things that move up the chain in the state too. So, that's basically what I've been doing.
Any, any comments or questions from the board members?
Thank you, Eric, for coming in today. Yes, sir, thank you.
I just have one item, Miles Anderson called me this morning, Miles Anderson's the state chief mitigation officer, and he said that he felt that the state of Florida would be ready to proceed with more than just the one acquisition I talked about at Alligator Point, that they are interested in considering, in finding out how many other people want to buy, want to sell on Alligator Point. So, when I go down this afternoon, I say to Mr. Pfeifer and Mr. Bowden who are sitting here, that if people, it's a voluntary acquisition now, you know, it's not, nothing's forced, but if you are interested in selling, they need to contact myself uh, and say, hey, I'm interested, and there's a process to go through, it's a, you know, a praise value, and everybody has to agree to it, but the state of Florida is interested in providing more assistance to buy out more people in Alligator Point based upon the damage.
Next on the general, Ms. Lisa Lent.
Good morning, commissioners, I want to say thank you to all the administrations county and city that's assisted everyone to getting back to some form of normalcy for our lives. Um, the Carabelle location did not receive any damage that I have found so far. We are somewhat of a limited service, we do have our wifi, there's no password, so anyone can use that. We have two public access commuter, uh, computers that are working, because they do connect to the wifi. I hope within forty-eight hours to have the rest of our public access open and available for, for use. That's due to a network server issue. We are connected through our wild cooperative, which is in Monticello, so their internet has been up and down until they can get fully reset. We cannot be fully reset, and then we'll just have to troubleshoot and make sure we don't have any other issues. All of our other regular services are available for copy, scan, fax. Of course, if there's a, you're sending something somewhere that does not have an active number or an active email because of an ISP, then that's going to be an issue, but we can try to work around that. We do have the Small Business Administration Group for disaster assistance, they will be starting tomorrow. At the Carabelle location, I've opened up our facility for them, got them program room, got them the, uh, stuff that they will need to meet with people. They will be there as we are open from nine AM to six PM and on Saturday from ten to two. The East Point location, it is now fully operational, I was able to get all of our networking open back yesterday. We do have some minimal damage to the roof. We have a volunteer that works with our music second language, and he came in, I guess it was Sunday, actually got up on the roof, got our ridge vent put back on to where, in case we get rain, we won't lose any inventory. We have a few other issues there, the Friends of the Library is working with the insurance on that. Once again, all of our operations is available there. We have full computer access, we have wifi access, so anybody that needs any of that, welcome to come to the library. I know Michael's gonna probably stage some people there for that. I do have two program rooms available there, so if we need meeting space or anything that we can assist, that I can assist with, I'll be glad to do so. For our staff, all of my staff came through okay. I've got two staff that are not back on duty yet. We, September twentieth, the libraries did become fully staffed, we were able to get our full-time staff at East Point hired. Anna, she lives on the island, she is not back, she is actually in Oklahoma right now. She started with us September twentieth, her husband passed October fourth. So, she's been dealing with a lot, so we hope to have her back soon. But anything that the library can do for the community, we will. That's all I have.
Thank you for your report this morning. Next one, Jason, is he not here?
One, one item from Jason, you want to bring it up? All right, so, uh, Mr. Bone has not been able to use his hangar because, uh, because Duke Energy took it over. It's a big, beautiful hangar, and he had, he threw all his planes out, so Mr. Bone is asking for, uh, relief from payment of rent until he gets back in his hangar, because Duke Energy's in there.
Didn't we give him some kind of consideration not too long ago?
We did, but this is what, you know, he, his hangar was the biggest, safest place, so when, when he took his planes out, Duke Energy, we gave him the airport, and they thought it was empty, so they moved all their trucks in there, and they blocked it, blocked it all. So, they're in there now, and as soon as he gets out, he'll take it back over as our thing as rent.
I'm not for that, he can't donate it to, for this cause.
What are you talking about, a week, a month?
No.
No. No, if he can't help people in that cause, he can pay.
Okay, fine, that's fine.
We got game, Lee, why?
Okay, can I be excused then to go to Alligator Point, if you don't need anything else?
You have a report here?
No, I'm done, I've already done it.
Okay, okay. All right, Al.
Tell Alan like you tell Mr. Don, go to work, get to work, get to work.
Madam clerk, you're next.
I'll try to keep it real brief. Although we do have some minimal damage at the courthouse, the main courthouse, it's going to reopen tomorrow to the public. I think Mr. Watson has already had staff in the Carabelle office yesterday, so I think Carabelle has already been up and running. I actually have my staff at work today preparing, um, so that we can be more responsive tomorrow when the public walks in. I was in the courthouse after the hurricane, I had staff there. I mean, I'm even going to say Erin Griffin, that you all know is a finance, had, you know, her place was on Saint George Island. Erin still came over here to contact insurance adjusters, and we've already got people in the courthouse, you know, setting up equipment yesterday. Erin's been over here, even though she's probably need to be on the island taking care of things. Michael Marone's been here a lot, helping me, Shane, your custodian, I can't say how many trips Shane's made back and forth with me, supporting his home back here, and just been responsive, trying to get the courthouse up and running. Lori came in. Linda, I mean, I had some staff that came in yesterday just to try to make sure all our computers came back on, were on board, ready to go. I also want to thank Trey, who was the owner of CPO Creek, who came down and volunteered his equipment, his time, and tried to push all the mud out of the parking lot to try to get us back in, and I just think that he should be commended when any of you run into him. I've been in contact with a lot of other clerks in our area, and it's easy for me to say that I think we were truly blessed. I'm proud of all of our county commissioners and our employees, because I think every one of y'all have shown immense dedication to this county. I know we still got a tremendous amount of work to be completed, and a lot of that's going to be done behind the scenes by our workers and you people. And I'm just grateful for all of y'all and all our workers who don't seek recognition, that just love Franklin County. I'm just blessed today, and I know y'all all feel the same way, and if there's anything me or my staff can do to help this county, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Tell them we said thank you, Pam.
Our commissioners, we, we move on, one thing I do want to say, uh, the Florida League of Cities, which is our, the insurance company, the one we were going on to bid earlier, and we postponed till the spring, they did a fantastic job. They had a ride crew here before the storm got, got here, and they sat at the E O C and waited until the storm was over, and then they started going to all the county's properties to look at them and assess them and get them ready for us and let us know what damage was there. So, props to Florida League of Cities, they did a very good job. All right, I'll say that. Want to move on to my report now. Item number two on my report, we already did one. As part of the recovery effort, I've set up satellite permitting offices in Carabelle and East Point. Between the hours of nine and four PM, you can visit permitting clerks at the Annex Building in Carabelle or at the East Point Library, thank you very much, Lisa, to request a permit for electrical repairs or storm-related, electrical, or store-related repairs. All store-related permits fees are waived, there's no cost, but we do need the per- permits so that we can keep track of what's being done. New construction permits will only be issued at Apalachicola location, so that's a whole different ballgame that we're talking about when it comes to new construction permits. I just got a call from, uh, Mr. Gary, and I might need board action on this. So, the, the city of Apalachicola's building inspector is unable to get to Apalachicola to perform any inspections, which includes electrical repairs and upgrades and other things, other storm-related items. He is asked that he will send a, a, a note to us, email, whatever, asking that if we would do inspections, Mr. Gary, our billing official, will do inspections within the city of Apalachicola to help their residents get their, get their power back on or do any repairs that they need. Only the inspections, not the paperwork. The paperwork will be handled by the city of Apalachicola. Pending I get all this worked out within the next day or two, uh, I would like board action allowing our billing official to do inspections for storm-related recovery issues within the city of Apalachicola.
Pleasure, board.
What he gonna be, how it gonna work, Mike?
In other words, commissioners, if somebody has a broken weatherhead or meter base is broken, Duke Energy did not power them up when they powered up everybody else, they need to go get an electrician to come and do the repairs, and then Mr. Gary needs to go there and put an approval, the green sticker, sticker. We send a release to Duke, Duke will come then and power up that person. That's what I'm talking about.
Well, motion on floor by Commissioner Masser, second by Commissioner Jones. To reiterate again, I know you said it three times, but storm-related issues.
Storm-related issues. I almost want to narrow it just to electrical upgrades, but I, I won't, I'll just say storm-related i- issues.
Hold it.
Sir?
You mean every, everything?
As it relates to storm, no, no new construction or nothing like that, just repairs for storm-related issues.
And, and, and let's add a little something to that, to where we can get the people's power on to them quicker.
Yes, yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that, that's the whole issue then.
That's the goal, yes, ma'am.
And that's the reason why we're allowing it to be done, is to where the people's power can get cut on faster.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, we do have a motion, a second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, commissioners. Item number three, as the board is aware, the county has been closed since Tuesday, October ninth, due to the hurricane. Anyone wanting to respond to the RFQ for T D C, T D C administrative services was unable to submit their package. Since the board is planning to meet at a special session on October twenty-ninth for interviews, I recommend advertising through the county website, O I S, the Times, and the courthouse doors, if necessary, October twenty-sixth as the new deadline. During Mr. Blair's administrative report, at that October twenty-ninth special meeting, the board could open a sealed RFQs and schedule a new date for interviews and selection.
Pleasure, board.
I just need to change, basically what I'm asking you to do is allow me to change the deadline date and to, uh, say that instead of interviews on the twenty-ninth, that's when we'll be actually opening those sealed RFQs. That's all I'm asking for at the moment.
So, you don't want the T, so you wouldn't be able to have the T D C, uh, check the criteria and make sure that they meet the criteria of it, then that's what we've been saying the whole time?
Well, ma'am, we can't open, they can't check the criteria until we receive the sealed bids and open them here. All I'm asking for is to open and, and receive and open it, that's it.
Yeah, let me ask you a question, Michael, had we, before the storm come in, or before October fifteenth, yesterday with the deadline, did we have any applications come in?
No, ma'am, not at all.
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even know we had one, one came in.
Okay.
So, we'll have to hold that sealed.
Okay, we need to take and reject that then, if we're going to go out and do it again, don't we, or?
Okay, we can just, we'll hold up a seal, yes, ma'am, we'll just hold, seal that seal.
Mr. Shane?
What I'm understanding from Mr. Marone, he's asking for the board to amend the existing RFQ, which means I would have to prepare an amendment extending the time period for turning in the applications from October the fifteenth to October the twenty-sixth, with the additional information that the board would then open, uh, the RFQs at your special meeting on October the twenty-ninth, and I wasn't sure what else, what other action you were wanting to take.
That's it, just to, uh, open them and maybe schedule interview dates at, at future. Okay. I guess depending what, how everybody else is getting.
Because if it was the will of the board to have, to do it while I'm still on board, after today, we won't have a...
We'll need another special meeting.
One more meeting.
Yes, ma'am, we'll need another special meeting.
Are you going to, might be some more meetings before I leave?
Yes, ma'am, I'll make you work a lot harder for your money before you leave, yes, ma'am.
But we got, what, looking, what, um, how long will be, we, this thing getting put on, that it getting put on? With the Blair contract, what, it, it's in, what kind of time limit they gonna have for the people to, for him to kind of get together and tell the people something what's going on?
That's what I'm working on, and...
Did we extend his contract three months?
Yes, till, till the end of December, correct, sir?
Till the end of December, so he's hired till the end of December.
I know, but we, we gonna lose another two weeks. What I'm saying is, right?
I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, so that's what I'm saying, after we receive them on the twenty-ninth, I think we need to speed up the process as best as possible, especially, like the board had said before, they wanted, uh, Commissioner Sanders to be part of this till the end. You know, we got, we're gonna have to, another special meeting, we just to get this speed up. That's not the right term, but, yes, well, I, I want to try my best, Commissioner, likely, I know what you're saying, to move as fast as possible to get this done as quickly as possible.
This is, this thing's been going on since May, y'all.
I know.
Well, they should, that was, they should have just came in front of both kind of commissioners, I mean, all the other stuff, we get the...
Commissioners.
Hold on.
That's basically what he's telling you, it gonna happen, basically.
So...
Well, I mean, they supposed to turn in these applications, but then this hurricane, nothing we can do about that. And you want to afford everybody the opportunity, you only got one person that's turned it in, so you got to extend the date so these other people have opportunities to turn in. There's nothing we can do about some of these, some of these issues.
So, if, if, I guess get the, the motion to, again, like based on what Attorney Shula said, to just amend the RFQ for the new deadline date and open them on the twenty-ninth, like we planned to meet anyway, uh, that's, that's all I'm asking for right now, when we move forward from there.
Michael, could I, could I ask, at, on the twenty-ninth, you would then, because the RFQ says you're going to refer them to the T D C, which means we have to have a special board meeting to review them, and if there are over five, and I think we all probably guess there won't be, but we never can tell, uh, you know, we'll have to rank them. I suppose if we get less than five, that would make it very easy, I mean, we just submit all five to you. But I'm trying to figure out how we schedule, uh, another meeting of the T D C so they can review them and get them back to you by...
Well, that's what I was saying, if we just write enough, I just get the board to approve the extension of the deadline date and open the RFQs on the twenty-ninth, you're going to be hitting the twenty-ninth with a full report. At that time, we can sit down all together and put, put a schedule together to get everything else done.
Okay.
That's, that's all, again, I'm, you're reaching way past what I'm asking for, I'm asking for a simple thing today, just extend the deadline date and accept and open them on the twenty-ninth, that's all, that's all.
All emotional flow by Commissioner Likely. Do we have a second?
Sir?
Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, and motion carried.
I'm going to pause my report, because Mr. Blair, since we're talking about T D C, he would like to get the visitor centers contracts approved today if possible, because then, I think some of them are waiting for some money, they've been working without money, and maybe on the twenty-ninth, on part of that bill list, we can get some of those checks cut, correct, sir?
Yes, in fact, they, their, the request for the checks may already be at the clerk's office, I, um, I think we were going to send them in contingent on this decision today.
We did not approve a bill list today, so that's when the, we approve on the twenty-ninth, so that's why you're here.
Commissioners, we're just late, uh, we have three of the four visitor centers contracts that are, that are up, they're the same as they've, they've been for the last several years. The only difference is that, uh, in our budget request that we gave to you earlier, our board up, increased the amount for the chambers in Carabelle and Apalachicola, because they rent their property as opposed to having free property, so our board thought it was appropriate that they should have... appropriate that they should have, uh, an increase, so that was included in our budget and that's included in these contracts. We just got tied up because of the hurricane and our board meeting didn't get a quorum last month, so.
Pleasure, Bowden. Pay these visitor centers?
Second. I don't want to make second motions, but that-
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Commissioners, if I may just give you a report, I apologize, I thought I was gonna be stranded today and I was able to get in, and I apologize to Michael for the confusion. Uh, we, as of Friday, we stopped all of our advertising out of the area, both in digital as well as press, because it was obviously not appropriate. And we're beginning to work on a modified, uh, message for, uh, you know, we're strong, we're gonna come back, all that sort of thing. I think it's also worth telling you, I've been in contact on a regular basis with, uh, Ken Lawson, the CEO at Visit Florida. We're working with them to help, uh, develop a, a, a strategy for when we are open. We're, we're inventorying the, uh, the lodging companies so we know when we'll have rooms and of course, the big thing is the roadways that, you know, nobody can get here. So as soon as that's done, I think we're gonna have some, some properties that are gonna be open. Um, and Visit Florida has offered to help, not only for promotional dollars, but, but for some other assist, financial assistance for helping us get back, get our tourist facilities back operating. And I just wanna let you know that all that was going on. Thank you, love.
Thank you, sir. And my final item, commissioners, there were many items scheduled for today's meeting that were removed, uh, and will be added to future meeting agendas, some of these items such as the bill list, like I said, minutes, uh, the CB, CDVG waiver, um, and there are other items. Most of that, as I just listed, will probably be on the October twenty-ninth special meeting.
Along with other storm-related issues?
All along with other storm-related issues, yes, sir.
So if you could, don't put more on this agenda than you have to.
I'll try my best to keep it as narrow.
Storm-related issues have to be dealt with, the bill list has to be dealt with, the CDVG waiver has to be dealt. I understand we have things that has to be dealt with, but don't pile on anything else that can wait to the first meeting in November, you know?
If, it'll be between the twenty-ninth and the second meeting of, of November is when I'll try, I'll try to move it as much as I can, that's not storm-related, to the second meeting in November.
Yeah, I mean, do what you gotta do, Mike. I mean, you do it, but I'm just saying, don't put so much on us that we can't conduct business, 'cause some of these issues, as you've seen today, take a lot more time than five or 10 minutes.
Oh, yeah.
We, we schedule in five or 10 minutes, but it ends up taking hours.
Never expect any public comments to last that long, yes, sir.
Well, I mean, they have legitimate concerns and that's fine. Yes, ma'am?
I, I just received a call from, um, tax collector Rick Watson, and he said that there'd been a little mix-up with that, uh, van coming in to do driver's license, uh, stuff, and said that the van is in East Point today and will be in Apalachicola tomorrow. So just wanted to let you know. And one thing I forgot to say too, that I wanna give a little credit to our court admin and our chief judge, and, um, I've been having daily calls with them every day since the day after the hurricane, to, to make sure about the courthouses and, and the operations of court and, you know, inmates and people needing to plea and things. And, um, our court admin did send a team down yesterday to view our courthouse and the situations all in Apalachicola, which helped to get the courthouse reopened. But I also sent them back to Tallahassee through that road that the county's maintaining because they needed to know that people can have access to get to the courts if they needed to. So I just wanted to bring that up, that OSC has been really involved and the chief judge and all are trying to get us back up and running.
I'm glad you took them through that road, taught them how to go.
If I could switch hats for a second, commissioners, uh, as the, uh, chairman of the, uh, of the weans, of our hospital board, there are a few items I wanna correct. One, our clinics are open, not, not half-day, full-day, from eight until four-thirty PM. And another thing, the holdup with the emergency room is OSC. There was damage to the lab, which, there's damage to the roof over the lab. OSC said until that is fixed and they can come down here and certify that, we cannot open the emergency room. You have the staff, you have everybody's hair, you got people cleaning the hospital and, and, and a second thing, also air quality testing. That's another thing they're recommending and they wanna see the results of those tests before they allow us to open the emergency room. So your, your weave staff is here, they're working hard, but you cannot fight them. OSC, I'm sorry, they're, they're, they're the bosses, they're the people. So that's the status of the hospitals. As far as I know, H, uh, Mr. Cannington will inform me, I will inform you guys right away as soon as they give us a green light and we're open and good to go.
Do you know when our iPads will be back up?
I didn't realize that they were.
I mine haven't been up since power went off last two Wednesdays.
I'll check.
I have nothing.
Okay.
It's just like it don't work.
Is everybody else's work?
No, it don't work.
I'll check them and see.
I'm saying, if mine don't work, I'll go ahead and give it to you, it's just mine.
Mine's spotty.
Last thing I need.
There's probably a thousand emails in that thing from state agencies and everything else, they're in this response and they don't work.
I'll check.
I had somebody from Gilchrist County call me, 'cause one of my commissioner friends over there in Levy County, y'all know who she is, couldn't get a hold of them, they got, she got a hold of them with a satellite phone to see, I said, I, I just got my phone in on Sunday afternoon, I said, I, I'm just getting phone service. I mean, it, it was bad.
It comes back, Mike, and says the server's not working.
Server's not working.
The server, which I know you don't have the server, but I'm just saying.
Mine was working, if you wanna check with me, if you need it, I can give you mine.
I ain't doing nothing. It hasn't done nothing since last Wednesday. Tomorrow's Wednesday again. Man, I'm getting different, people telling me they send me different emails, storm-related stuff, I can't see any of it.
Well, Mike, can I say that?
Yes. Mr. Moron?
Sir, I'm sorry.
Mike, I'm finna put a motion at him.
Uh-oh.
I'm fin-
You tell, look, Karen, we, at the hospital.
Yes, sir.
We had him, he the CEO, and he running the hospital. If he got problem and with his staff, but they don't wanna listen to him, he know what to do.
Okay.
Run the hospital, what, do whatever he got to do. Put that upon motion.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Lockley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massie, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.